Twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. And the governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the school committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided or in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into BCAT Government Cable Access Channel and BCAT Government Meetings Facebook Live feed or over the phone at four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. The meeting number is one two nine one one eight eight six two zero. Okay. So the meeting is called to order. And I'd like to just talk for us for a minute about how I'm planning on running the meeting tonight, which is slightly different from the past. The election's over, the first meeting for the new members is over. And it's time to tighten up the meetings a little bit. So my plan is, and I hope everyone will help out. If you think to address either with a question or a comment that is not on the agenda, please put your name on the chat when it comes to public participation. Do not put your question or your comment on the chat, only your name. And I will call on people in order. Martha, can you watch the?
I have not been successful at watching the Facebook feed. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll try to do it. Someone else that can do it.
Look at it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if someone in the audience wishes to speak on an item that is on the agenda, this is how it's going to work. I think if Kristen were here, she could explain this a whole lot better than I do, but here's the point. This is a school committee business meeting, and the five members of the school committee have business to take care of. It is a public meeting. It is a meeting held in public, but it is not a public hearing. So when it comes to an agenda item, I will ask the school committee members for their input and discussion. And when they are finished, I will ask Ways and Means members if they are present. And after that, I will take questions and comments from the public. And again, if you wish to speak on an agenda item, when we get to it, put your name, not your question and not your comment, just your name in the chat. And I think that will bring us back to some of the order that we generally have in live meetings. Okay, having said all that, could I have a motion to approve the warrant?
I move that we approve the warrant. Martha Simon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant. Are there any questions?
Actually, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I may have seconded it too soon. I plan to abstain from this vote because my wife was given a refund check of a hundred dollars on this warrant for Lego Robotics Club. Does it matter that I'm going to abstain?
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant. All those in favor, Mrs. Bond?
Are you muted? Sorry, I am muted. Yep, I.
Mr. Foss?
I abstain.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Abstain.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. So it's three zero two, Sharon. Sharon here?
I saw her name.
Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes of March tenth.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's from movement second to approve minutes of March tenth twenty twenty. All those in favor, Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. Motion to approve the minutes of six nine twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. It's five zero. I still don't see Sharon. Where are you, Sharon? I can hear you now. Okay, public participation. Is there someone here? That looks like Sherri Ellis would like to speak. And Eileen? Okay, Sherri, you were first.
All right, I am muted. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple of questions slash clarifications going back to the twenty twenty, the financials. I appreciate Dr. Conti and Nicole. They were back and forth for town meeting, and some of the questions weren't really, you know, for town meeting, so they got back to us. But I had a couple of just remaining clarifications, I guess. And so the documents were just put up the other day, so I read over those. And just a couple of things I want to clarify regarding the stipends and/or the tutors and substitutes, those kind of line items. So yes?
Yep.
Okay. So with regard to the stipends, so a question about, one says, one line item sixteen says the athletic coaching, and the other one says contractual stipends. So are not all stipends contractual? That would be my first question. Is that why they're broken out?
Either Dr. Conti or Nicole, please answer that.
Sure, through the chair. So I they're, both line items are contractual. We just broke out athletic versus other stipends. They're listed separately in the contract.
So they're part of the contract and negotiations and all of that. So understanding that the teachers were teaching this year, were the folks who received the stipends, were they doing the duties that they do to receive the stipends? Because it appears that they've, you know, received or will be receiving most of those. So was that part of it?
Eric?
Through the chair, that I think the majority of people had started their stipend work or had been doing some planning. I think the stipends that we we had further conversations about were the spring coaching stipends, and I think that we there had been some planning, even though the spring sports hadn't met. And because the close down was sort of phased in, people were still doing some work. And then the closing out the stipends became sort of part of a bigger conversation in terms of getting the the contract settled for the following year. So so we agreed to pay out all of the fiscal twenty stipends as part of that, part of that negotiation.
Okay, so that would probably be similar answer then for the tutors and the substitutes as well then, since they did, you know, they ninety percent or over ninety percent of their budgets are, you know, encumbered or spent. And were the tutors and substitutes also working the last part of the school year?
I think I'm going to break that, break up those those two groups. I think the tutors were working with individual students. And the substitutes, there's two groups of substitutes. There's a per diem substitutes. Those are the ones that we call. They get a call early in the morning. We weren't paying the per diem substitutes because they weren't working. They weren't coming in. There are perm subs, so there are subs that are assigned to each building that I also think were doing some work during the closure and working with kids. So Ms. Ellis, I was sort of getting a little bit more granular, but that's the distinction I was making between perm subs and per diem subs.
Okay, so I guess that's, thank you for the clarification. So now I understand that. So I guess my question would be is, we've learned a lot in the last three months about a lot of different things, and you guys have been, you know, overwhelmed and swamped with a lot of things. But going forward in like contract negotiations, is there something to be thought about, and maybe you already have, about, you know, if something unexpected comes up and, you know, we're not able to perform the duties we perform, are there, you know, negotiations that you could put into the contract that you could negotiate not paying, you know, the full salaries or anything like that going forward? I mean, it sounded like you did something with that with the transportation where you got some kind of a rebate or not paying the whole thing. So is there something that going forward in next contract negotiations with salaries and things like that, you could consider that?
Eric?
Sure, I guess, again, we can, we can, we can, we can consider anything. Most of what we spent time discussing with the, with the unions were working conditions over the last three months. So we could certainly talk about salaries being, being a part of that. So.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. I neglected, before I continue with public participation, Eric, could you introduce our student rep? Just say hello, and then we'll go back to public participation.
I certainly can. Sarah Shake is going to be our student rep this year. So she'll be replacing Bridget Conceason, who graduated. And so Sarah is joining us tonight, and Sarah is also going to be updating the committee on some of the work she's been doing with the Equity Committee with Patrick. So we're looking forward to working with Sarah this year. So.
Welcome, Sarah. We'll get to you under the Equity Committee. And now let's go back. I believe Eileen was next.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Eileen Sackler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. So just to beat up the stipends, I guess I'm glad to hear you say that, Dr. Conti, because I was concerned, because if you look at FY twenty one, the budget is flat. And so I thought, well, if twenty, you know, are we under budgeting in twenty one if we only paid out three quarters in twenty, but that doesn't sound like that's the case. So that's good. And speaking of that report, the third column on this operating budget report, we have the budget and then spent and then encumbered. So just to clarify for me, encumbered means accrued, that is, you know, this is what's been expensed and paid or not, and anyway, to be paid. Does encumbered mean accrued?
Yes, that's.
That's the core question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does?
Yes.
Okay. And then lastly, I think it was the last meeting, one of the school committee members mentioned that there could be surprises in July, you know, getting an invoice that we didn't expect. So that raised my antenna because I thought, well, wait a minute, I thought we had processes in place to, so that wouldn't happen again.
I think we do, but Nicole, could you address that?
Yes, we do have processes in place to ensure that that doesn't happen ever again.
Okay, all right, good. Never say never, though. All right, good. Glad to hear. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, next in line is Lynn Gothia.
Hi, I'm a parent of three, three young children that are going to be in Fox Hill next year. And I, like many parents, have concerns about what's going to happen in the fall. I know this isn't the forum for raising those concerns, but I'm wondering, one, whether there's going to be such a forum planned, how I can find out about it? And two, what's the plans for surveying parents and getting their input in the process for fall planning?
I'll throw this to Eric, but I believe that as soon as we know, we'll know, and then whatever leeway we have, we can discuss. But Eric, why don't you answer the question?
Dr. Gothia, again, I think we will be communicating with parents when we, as soon as we get the guidelines and we put some put some reality to what the state is expecting. And we were going to talk about this a little bit later in the agenda, but I think that we're going to have to do some surveying of parents and staff anyway as a part of the process. Again, an example might be, are you planning on using a bus, or do you need a bus? Because we're going to have to rethink transportation. So again, that's just giving you one possible example of the questions that we're going to be asking. There may be parents that don't want to send their kids back to school as well. So we're going to be surveying parents. You've asked about input in terms of what our plan is. Again, I think we need to put a plan together. And I think that we will have an opportunity for people to respond, respond to that plan. Again, the early indication is we're going to need to have three, three plans. We're going to have to have a full, a full remote, a hybrid, and then a full return plan. And then for the, for the remote and for the hybrid, I think the state is going to be much more prescriptive than they were this spring. So I'm sure we'll have a certain percentage of local reality, local decisions that we need to make, but I think a lot of, a lot of what we're going to need to do is going to be prescribed in terms of for the health and safety of students. So I just want to make sure you'll have an opportunity. I'm trying to think of a timeline. Patrick and I, we're going to start a weekly communication coming up in a, in a, in a week or so. Probably the guidelines were supposed to come out last week, but we're hearing now maybe Thursday they're going to come out. And so we're probably talking about mid-July or so, when we'll have some sort of plan for people to respond to.
Will parents be able to have some input in creating that plan? I think one of the frustrations for parents is this is directly impacting us, and we don't feel like we have a seat at the table.
And again, it's going to depend on how much flexibility the district has locally. So will parents be able to change a state directive? Probably not. But if there are other things that we have some local control over, then we'll certainly get some input.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next name I see is Bill McCarthy. Are you there, Mr. McCarthy? I am, but the mic isn't working. He says, okay, you want to, do you want to text me a question? Oh, move on. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, is there anyone else at public participation on something not on the agenda? Next item is the coronavirus update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I essentially, I think I just gave it to Dr. Gothia. So we were supposed to have, again, our guidelines last week. They've been delayed. I know that the governor's office is, is working with the commissioner. And just from the meetings that I've been at, we're going to have to prepare for different scenarios. And then we're also going to have to prepare to go, if we do have students back in school, we're going to have to prepare to shift between having the students in school and remote depending on the spread of the virus and other, other factors that we'll hear from on the state. So I do just want to, my, my update is going to be to, to thank the educators in Burlington, who I think since March thirteenth have really reinvented their, you know, how, how education is delivered. And I think they've learned an incredible amount of new skills while also teaching. I think some of the examples of connection and caring that we tried to share with you through our daily emails with staff, we're just, we're just incredible. So I know that remote learning is not perfect. I know that we can always get better. I know that there are sort of mixed reviews. We tried to get some of that feedback that we shared with the committee. We've also been reaching out to teachers and students, and Patrick has has some of those surveys. We're still, those are still open. We're still getting results. But I, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into delivering delivering content remotely. And I just want to make sure I thank the principals, the teachers, tutors, all the staff that really, really tried to make this work. And again, I think Maryhood and Special Ed has been just really working hard to make sure that we're addressing all students' needs. And, and it's, it's a real challenge in a remote setting. So I don't have much of an update for you now because we don't have our guidelines yet. And again, we're expecting them imminently. And again, just to remind the committee, we've had this conversation, there's going to be a spectrum of, of, of local decision. And my understanding, again, from the conversations I'm in, is we're not going to need to design a hundred percent of the plan. I think the state is going to be fairly prescriptive, and we'll have some aspects of the plan that we need to customize for Burlington. And I have some thoughts at how to, how to do that later on in the agenda. But it's not going to be, we're not going to design this from the, from the very beginning. It's not for Burlington to create this plan by themselves, so by ourselves. So anyway. That's, that's my update, Madam Chair. I'll certainly answer any committee, committee members' questions.
Okay, hang on one second. Does anyone on the committee have a question or a comment? Catherine, or Carl, or Tom, or Martha?
I'd just like to also thank all the teachers and staff who allowed us to get through this school year under this pandemic. It was not ideal. But I know how much people, you know, put effort into making it work. And I know that in the fall, whatever our situation is, we're going to, again, try to do the best we can and make this, we'll be doing, you know, a really good job trying to make sure this goes for all of our students. And, you know, also thanks to the families, because I know that all the families had additional responsibilities that they would not typically have in a year when students would go into school six hours and then. And I don't know what the right word is. I, I want to, I appreciate that that's been a really big burden for some families. It's been fine for others. It's credit to all of us that we're getting through this and, you know, trying to make sure everyone stays healthy and safe while we continue with the education. So thank you.
All right. Any other committee member? Tom? Catherine? Carl?
Yes, please. I would echo a lot of what Martha said. And Dr. Conti, if, what do you think the chances are the state will actually release the guidance on Thursday? I know I'm eager to read it. I'm sure everyone is, but they have kicked the can down the road a couple of times now, I'm wondering.
We're hearing that it's going to come out of the governor's office on Thursday, and there seems to be, I'm not sure whether the Department of Ed is going to release their guidelines concurrently, but I think they're waiting on the governor's office to, to sort of, to shape the health picture. And then I think they're going to try to put out the educational picture after the, the health picture is there. So again, I think we're our association, that we're probably talking to the commissioner every day, so they, they understand they have to release guidelines very soon. So I don't think they can continue to push it. I think the reason it's been delayed is not from the department's perspective. I think it's the, I think the health situation is changing pretty rapidly, and the governor's trying to to define a path, I think, on pretty shaky ground. So I think that's, that's the challenge now.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments before we go on, it looks like Bill's microphone is working. Would you like to speak now?
I'm going to try. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank God. So frustrating. So thank you for your time. I will admit, I'm not familiar with the, the school committee and how you guys operate. But a friend of mine encouraged me to come and rather than share my opinion with him, share it with you guys. So just so you understand where I'm coming from, I had, both of my kids go to Burlington High School. My oldest is now a junior at UVM, and my youngest graduated this year. I want to provide some, my perspective of how, how this whole COVID nineteen situation played out and how, how well I feel the town of Burlington's school system responded to it. I, I can appreciate that everybody tried hard and pulled together, and I find myself in the situation where I have to be the guy, the negative Nellie at the end, after everybody patted everybody else on the back for, for pulling it all together. But I'm going to tell you, as a parent, and I hope you guys will reflect on, on my commentary, I was disappointed. I was really surprised. I was disappointed in the education my son has received since March tenth. I felt like he did nothing for three weeks. And then finally, when things started to happen, all he got was homework. And I find myself wondering, like, why did we not try to continue to teach the same curriculum? My oldest son goes to the University of Vermont, and they managed to figure out remote learning, you know, at a hundred percent, probably not. But they went right back to scheduled classes after a week and two days of breaks. And countless other organizations, including the one I work for, were able to, to move quickly to remote work. And I have a, you know, I run an organization of a hundred people. Most of them are not nearly as technically savvy as high school kids and maybe even junior high and elementary school kids. And I guess the first question I have is, you know, were the teachers continued, were the teachers obligated to continue to work and provide education?
Dr. Conti, do you want to handle this?
I mean, the answer is yes.
Okay, so I'm curious why, why we didn't try to go remote and why we took the approach of, of just, you know, basically emailing out homework. You know, this, the school committee was able to go remote, although admittedly, I did have problems with my audio. You guys wouldn't try to run this school committee meeting by just emailing out questions and trying to collect all, all the response? So much of the learning is done by engagement, and, and I frankly felt like he, he didn't get any engagement. All, all he got was, was homework. And if I read the communications correctly, the homework wasn't even new stuff. It was, well, we're not going to try to teach anything new. And so, you know, I had, I had a kid, frankly, lying around the house doing anywhere from ten to ten minutes to forty-five minutes worth of homework every day. And why didn't we try to go remote?
I believe that in a lot of cases we did. I have a grandson that's a senior, granddaughter that's a junior, another grandson that's a sophomore, and a freshman. And they were all doing online remote, not certainly every minute of every day. But I haven't heard any complaints from them about not having enough. The first few weeks, I agree, there wasn't much new material, but after that it picked up. Eric, can you shed any light on this?
Yeah, what I'm asking is, you know, why didn't we go with teaching as much of the same curriculum as we could via video? And, and the power dynamic and the technology is such that you could easily take attendance. and you could run the whole class. And I didn't see any of that from him. I saw like 10-minute check-ins occasionally. Was there a mandate that went to the teachers, like, listen?
Was. Dr. Conti, do you want to weigh in on this?
And again, I'm not going to respond to everyone's individual experiences. Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry that your son didn't have a positive experience. We did survey all the parents, and we did get, we got some critical feedback, such as yours. We got some very positive feedback, and we got some sort of feedback in the middle. So as we said, remote learning isn't perfect. I think we were very careful to follow the state guidelines. I think there were different phases of those guidelines that started off with not providing new material, and then adjusted into providing new material. And we followed that. And so the high school did have a schedule, and teachers were providing work, and they were teaching remotely. Remote learning is different than online learning. And again, we were tasked with providing remote instruction. So again, I'm sure there were different experiences. And as I said, I'm sorry your experience with the remote wasn't positive.
So are you saying that there was an expectation that every teacher teach the class they would have in person via video?
For the same schedule that they would have been in person? The answer to that is no. But we, there was a schedule put out. There was content covered. I'm not really sure how to answer your question. Did we run a seven-period day? Virtually, we did not do that.
And my question is, why couldn't we?
Again, we couldn't reach all students that way. And that was not the guidelines that we were asked to provide from the state. So.
What, was it contradictory to the state guidelines to provide better than what they're asking for? Here's the way I look for it. The way I look at it is like, this town's got a ton of resources. They got a ton of smart people. We could have, we could have run a seven-period day and had, you know, taught the class via video, called on.
Okay. I think, I think if you want to continue the discussion privately with Dr. Conti at another time, that might be a good idea. But we've exceeded our three minutes on this particular.
We only got three minutes?
Three.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll end by saying that, Dr. Conti, I look forward to the dialogue. I'm only trying to help. And what I'm hearing here is contradictory to what I heard from some of the folks in your organization.
Your input. And hopefully, as we move on, there won't have to be remote learning. If there is, we will certainly pay attention to what you told us. Thanks. Okay. Eric, could you go back to, well, I guess I can do this. It's the Burlington CPAC Awards. Beth, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great.
Awards to present.
I do. Thank you, Ms. Monaco and the rest of the board for your time. My name is Beth Warner. I'm Beth Colburn. I'm the membership chair for the Burlington Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC. As most of you know, I'm usually here to gripe and grumble. So I'm really excited to be highlighting something wonderful tonight. I'm here to recognize the work of five individuals, as well as announce the recipient of our first-ever CPAC award. We decided to create the award before COVID to show our appreciation for those who work closely with special needs students in the Burlington School District. We all have people in our children's lives who we are so grateful for, and we wanted to create a way to recognize some of those people. CPAC members submitted nominations, and we couldn't just choose one winner. We had to recognize five additional people for the wonderful things that they do. I'll start with the five people receiving award of recognition. They are four special ed teachers in the middle school and one fifth-grade gen ed teacher at Fox Hill. Words that describe those educators were, goes above and beyond, works tirelessly, fully accepting of my child, and I'm so grateful. Every single parent that submitted something said, "I'm so grateful." Please join me in recognizing and congratulating Marsha Murphy, Wendy Huckstep, Erin O'Donnell, Alyssa Torcio, and Sharon Johnson-Hilts. Additionally, we have the winner of the CPAC award. She's a special educator in the high school and was additionally described as the most beneficial professional that has worked with our child, does extra work with him on her own time, schedules time just to talk to him, went above and beyond to help during remote learning, helped us all solve problems as they arose, et cetera. This person is here tonight as well. Please join me in recognizing for her hard work and dedication to her special needs students, Cara Kerwin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those wonderful people, all of the fantastic special educators here in Burlington.
Well, very grateful to you for doing this and recognizing people. How, are they all on this meeting?
Don't know. I've only been in communication specifically with Cara about attending.
Cara, would you like to say something?
Just that I'm grateful, and I'm, it's, I enjoy my work, and it's great to be recognized. I really appreciate the family recognizing me this way. I enjoy working with the kids.
Well, we thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wish to comment?
I just want to thank Cara as well. And if anyone else who won an award is on it, I really appreciate everything that you've done. It's, you know, going far and beyond. For any teacher, you know, pat on the back. It's a lot of dedication and hard work, and really can't thank you enough for all you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Murphy, where are you? He's hiding.
Well.
Martha?
Yeah, I want to appreciate the teachers, all six of you. It's, you know, great to know that you're being appreciated for all the hard work that you're doing and all of what you do for our students. And I also want to thank the CPAC group, who've got a lot on their plates and took the time to appreciate the teachers. So this is a wonderful new tradition. I hope it will continue. So thank you to all of you.
So Beth, I saw this, I believe I saw it on Facebook when you were asking for people to speak up about how great.
Yes.
Teachers were.
Yes, we saw it.
The whole thing?
I'm sorry?
Was the whole thing done via Facebook?
Yes, we didn't start the process until after COVID. So, yeah, it was all electronic.
Okay. Well, you did a great job, and we thank you for mentioning these teachers that are so good.
Thank you for your time. We're very grateful for our fantastic educators.
Great. Thanks.
Comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could, I tried to write down the names as you named them, but I couldn't keep up with you, and I didn't know how to spell, although I did find Kelly Torch's name because she's here at the meeting. But could we post these awards perhaps on the website or some other way to do it, maybe in the local media as well? So thank you very much.
Sure. We'll post their names on our Facebook page, and I can put them in the comments here, so you can have them as well.
That's great. Thank you. And Kelly, if you're listening, we appreciate your hard work very much.
Cara.
Okay. Name the, I thought it was a Kelly. No?
The winner of the award was Cara Kerwin. And the five recognitions went to Marsha Murphy, Wendy Huckstep, Erin O'Donnell, Alyssa Torcio, and Sharon Johnson-Hilts.
Okay. Torcio, I thought it was Kelly. As a first name, Kelly Torch. All right. Thank you. Give us the names, and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
So we'll move now to the Equity Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to turn it over to Patrick and Sarah to give you an update. And I just also want to add my thanks to Cara and the other teachers who are recognized. I think they represent, obviously, they, their individual efforts have been recognized, but I'm sure they would be the first to tell you they represent a whole lot of talented educators in Burlington. So thank you to the CPAC for recognizing those teachers, and congratulations to Cara. So Patrick, are you ready to, and Sarah, you're going to give us an update. Is that correct?
I'd like to start with Sarah. I know she has, she'd like to introduce herself to the group and also give an update in regards to the Equity Committee's work.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Shayk. I'm now a senior ed BHS. I was elected as the SCAP for next year, so I'll be the one attending the school committee meetings from now on. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for allowing me to represent the students at BHS. First, I would like to say that there's a lot of things that we can change in our school system. As a member of the district-wide Equity Committee, as well as the Burlington High School's Multicultural Club and Humans of BHS, I have continuously advocated for racial equity in our school system. At the recent Black Lives Matter vigil, it was really impressive to see Burlington High School graduates who exemplified the Burlington High School mission statement, which aims to graduate engaged citizens who use creative and critical thinking, contribute to their community, and who respect and understand human differences in an increasingly diverse and global society. These recent grads organized community members and spoke out against racism, sharing specific incidents of racism and discrimination in our schools. As I listened, I experienced a mix of emotions. I was angry that people of color still have to fight for racial equity. I was also sad that our town and our schools are not an exception when it comes to racism and discrimination. In fact, it is quite clear that there's a lot of work that we can do. Last year, the Humans of BHS made a presentation to the school committee titled "Addressing Bias and Building Equity in Burlington Public Schools." Two of our requests have been met. Administrators will participate in training, and we now have a district-wide Equity Committee. So thank you for listening to these student requests. This district-wide Equity Committee is made up of administrators, teachers, and BHS students. So we're working on an action plan currently, which highlights the immediate and long-term steps that we need to take in order to support our students of color. We need to train all faculty members to ensure that we have the best understanding of equitable practices in the classroom. We need a better hiring process to hire anti-racist educators, as well as teachers of color. We need to create safe spaces for students. One way to do that is to hire consultants who lead affinity groups. And as a high school student who is familiar with the Burlington High School school culture, I believe that all of these steps are highly important, and this is one of the ways that we can make a better and a safer environment for all of our students of color. So this is my report. And I would like to thank Mr. Larkin and everybody for giving me a chance to represent everybody.
Wow. That is remarkable. Comments?
Thank you, Sarah. So Sarah did reference the action plan. We have a wonderful group of educators and students from across the district. The students are all at the high school level, who have come together three times, spending hours on starting the work on this action plan. And I just, Sarah, I'm going to come back to you and put you on the spot one more time after this. There are some things that we had been working on with the hiring. The district's been part of the diversity network at the state level this year, with a number of other districts from around the state, where Joanne Faust and myself and Carrie Purchase have attended. I think we had three meetings in Worcester, and obviously, those got curtailed with the pandemic. In addition, Joanne's made some updates to our hiring page. But one of the things that is an immediate action item is for us to have a uniform question that's asked to all new potential employees in the interview process that also has a scoring rubric, scoring rubric attached to it. And here's the difference. We've asked over the last three years, Dr. Conti, that we had a list of questions surrounding cultural competence for prospective employees to answer. But we didn't, we didn't debrief afterwards. We didn't talk about what a good response was. I mean, we checked the box that the questions were asked, but I don't know how much they influenced the hiring process. So one of the things the Equity Committee would like to do, or that we're doing, is we're creating a similar question that's asked to all prospective employees that will also go with a scoring rubric to the folks that are interviewing these prospective employees to talk about what's a scale of one to four, an acceptable answer, an okay answer. And then the bottom two answers wouldn't meet the standard for what we expect of our new hires, and potentially would be deal breakers in our mind because of what we're looking to do in our, in changing of our hiring practices. So that's one, I think, immediate. The other one that I think we're going to be asking the school committee for, and I'd like to share a draft of that plan. It's kind of lengthy, but I don't, I can share it with you after the meeting, have it sent out, just so we can maybe talk about a little bit more in depth in July. But one of the things that we need to do is, is put some resources towards hiring a consultant to help us with this action plan. Because we've been working on this within the district and chipping away at it. But one of the things that happens, and it's not acceptable, is that it gets placed somewhere down the priority list as we get busy in the year. And that's not an excuse, but that's what's happened in the past. We want a consultant that's done this work in other districts to come in and support this work and to make sure that these action items are action items that make sense and to help us create concrete follow-throughs, deadlines, and so forth like that. So we do have feelers out. We've talked to a few people already and are waiting for some quotes back from these consultants to work with our district to help us move this work even faster. So again, that's, I know Martha was kind enough to attend our last meeting. I don't know if she wants to add anything. But I just want to ask Sarah, before I ask Martha if she wouldn't mind adding to the conversation, is, Sarah, what else for immediate actions? I want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything. I know we need the consultant ASAP, because if we're really going to put together a plan that's going to be acted on, it can't wait till the school year starts. So one of the things that keeps coming up is, in our district, I'll be honest, people aren't comfortable talking about race and racism. And that's not because we don't have, you know, teachers that care about that. It's just that they haven't had the training to do so. So again, if you talk to our students, and I've talked to some of the students that spoke on the common, sometimes something happens in school, and teachers are right there, and it doesn't get addressed. And I, and I would like to think it's because teachers don't know what to say, not that they are ignoring something that was clearly wrong. So that's, again, a priority item for us. Sarah, what else am I forgetting? If there is anything as far as immediate action items?
I think one of the only things was to, like, how we can provide safe spaces for students over the summer, because I know that this is a time when not all students have connections with teachers anymore. So I think one of the things that we talked about was creating these affinity groups for students and having these consultants with them. I just don't know how it would look like over the summer, or do we have to wait till the fall?
Thank you. Yeah, we've reached out to all of our students of color, particularly black families, to ask what kind of supports they need. Like, are counseling staffs available? We also have the Burlington Community Life Center, the counseling staff there. And at the middle school and high school level, we've contracted with a gentleman from Bedford, who already had a relationship with a number of our students from some of the Tenacity Challenge work. So those are some things that are happening. But we want to make sure that we have supports in place for. that we have supports in place for anyone that would need them, especially in the summer when we lose connection with our kids. Martha, I'm just gonna throw it your way to see if you have, you know, any things that stuck out to you from the action plan and/or from your conversations with folks on the Equity Committee?
Yes, through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
I, I was able to attend the last two meetings of the Equity Committee, and I, I want to add that the Equity, the District-wide Equity Committee has actually been meeting for two years. And then this past year, students were joined the committee. And I know there's discussion about how we can engage more families and community members, perhaps in the future, that's an ongoing discussion. But unfortunately, when the pandemic hit, it was an emergency, and the, you know, those, these things kind of stopped happening. But once George Floyd was murdered, it became clear that we can't just leave these things aside. And so, what I experienced in the meetings I attended, so they've met three times since all those protests across the country have begun, and the protests in Burlington, is that there's a real urgency among the people on the committee, and I really support that. I, I feel like we do need to have concrete next steps, and we need to have things that we can do now, even though some things will take a long time. And I feel like the committee has gotten this, and Dr., and Mr. Larkin and Dr. Conti have gotten this going right away. And I'm really encouraged about the urgency, I feel, in, in the staff to support, you know, which is, matches my feelings of urgency. I have seen the action plan, and it's got, it was put together by a couple of members of the committee, and I think they did a great job as a, as a first draft, and it's being worked on as we speak. So, I think there are, there's a lot going on that's really important. These strong statements that people make are important, but what are we gonna do? And I think that's happening now in our district. It's begun, and we need to keep making sure it continues. I did find a quote I want to give everyone that I think a lot of different people have said, but the quote I have identified specifically was Rabbi Tarzan from the year 200 in the Christian era, that "You are not required to finish this task of perfecting the world, but neither are you free to desist from it." And I think that, you know, that hopefully will give us all some encouragement, that, you know, we're not gonna fix everything this week. We, unfortunately, are probably not gonna fix everything this year, but we must continue to do this work. And I'm really glad that we are taking these actions now. I did want to read to people, for people who don't perhaps remember, the, Sarah, I'm really glad you read the mission statement from the high school, which includes, you know, so many valuable pieces to it. But the Burlington Public Schools also has a mission statement and a vision and core values. And one of the core values of the public school district, it says that "We are committed to creating a learning environment that values human differences, fosters a sense of belonging, and promotes cultural proficiency among all students and staff." And I feel like the action plan and the actions that are happening are really supporting that, and that we can move forward and make improvements in those areas. So, I'm very encouraged about that. I also want to, again, just encourage anyone who maybe didn't have a chance to look at the website that was set up by the district. It's the 21-Day Racial Equity Challenge. And day one, if you just go onto the website and look at day one, there's a TEDx talk that's only 12 minutes long that talks about what we need to talk about race. And as was mentioned earlier, it is hard to talk about race in this country, but we need to. And nobody's, none of the white people are gonna be an expert at it at the beginning, but I feel it's important for us to begin to try to make, to take steps, to take risks, and to listen, to listen to these voices of these young people who've come out. I, I missed the second protest, because I didn't realize there was a Juneteenth one, but the young people who've gone through the Burlington Schools, I'm just so encouraged that they feel the, they're brave to speak out and to talk about these things. And I feel that we have an opportunity as a community, we have an opportunity as a school district to really move and, and make some, make a difference with these, these issues of racism. So, I feel really hopeful for the first time in a while, and feel really encouraged by what's going on. I look forward to continuing work with the District-wide Equity Committee and continuing to hear reports back as we work with this. So, thank you.
Okay. Any committee members wish to comment?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start off with an admission in that I am several days behind on the challenge, but I would request, if possible, to put a link more prominently on the BPS website, if, if you can, or at least give it a bump up on the calendar, just so it's a little bit easier to find for people. That would be great. And the second question, is any anti-racist curriculum part of this committee's purview?
Dr. Conti, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, I can comment on it. You mean this committee being the school committee? Is that, or?
I'm sorry, the Equity Committee.
Oh, the Equity Committee. I think they're having a lot of conversations about incorporating questions of, of equity into some existing curriculum, but I do think they have also been talking about adding some courses where the primary focus is on equity and racial justice as well. So, I think they're having both of those conversations, Mr. Foss. And again, I think the action plan is, details some of that work, and I think, Patrick, you said you'll, you'll share that. And, and I think there's some timelines. We're trying to be as concrete as we can, so we don't let it slip back. And I think we're also trying to listen and let voices such as Sarah's take over and be, and be heard more. So, so, and I think with Sarah talking, we will get a lot more done.
Other members of the committee wish to speak?
Just quickly, if I could, Chris.
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
First of all, I want to welcome Sarah, and if that's any indication of what we can expect in this coming year, I look forward to working with you, because that was an outstanding presentation. I have a, my number two daughter works for a pretty large company and was put on a committee to deal with this issue, was, I think, it's obviously taken front page in a lot of different communities and a lot of different organizations across the country. And she made me promise that we at the Burlington School Department were gonna be doing our part. So, I'm glad to hear the, the report that we've heard, I'm glad to hear that the process is underway. I think one of the largest things that we have to do is create awareness, because a lot of times with these systemic issues, a lot of times, people don't even understand it's a problem, because they have different perspectives than people of color and people who live through those experiences. So, I think what we're seeing these past few weeks starts to create the awareness, and that I think is a big first step. Now, the second step is what we're gonna do about it. So, I look forward to working with the committee. I look forward to working with the school committee and the, and the administration as we proceed through this process, because I think this is an opportunity that we can't let pass. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll capitalize on it. And again, I want to thank Sarah for her report, and I look forward to her efforts.
Thank you. Catherine?
Yeah, I also wanted to say, welcome, Sarah, and very impressed with your presentation as well. One thing, I know, you know, we were talking about educating the students, but I think it's not just educating and talking to them, but I want to make sure that whatever we put together, that we teach them how to internalize what they're learning, because you can talk to, you know, any student out there. Again, don't know what programs we're putting in place, but whatever we do, we have to make sure we, we figure out a way to, to help the students internalize it.
Okay. I just want, go ahead, Patrick.
I just want to, if we could make sure that on every agenda, I know Sarah's gonna speak, but if we could ask her the question about how work is going with the Equity Committee. I think Sarah and the students at the high school, as everybody's already said, they're very thoughtful. They also have a couple of excellent teachers that are helping them along the way. I just, I just want them to keep pushing us, because the only way it's gonna get done is, I think, what, what caused this for me, and I think a lot of us in Burlington, was hearing our students on the Town Common and realizing how unacceptable it was in regards to where we're at. Dorothy Mullow said, you know, people thought when they were seeing this stuff in the outside world, this, this never doesn't happen in Burlington. But her perspective as a black student that went through Burlington High School is, yes, this is Burlington. Burlington has racism as well. So, we don't live in a romantic little community. We have racism like everybody else, and the students are gonna be the ones that need to push us along, because we've been there a long time, the adults, at least I have, I'll speak for myself, and haven't gotten the job done. So, I want her to be at the top, you know, when she talks on every agenda, I want to make sure she has an Equity update and can talk openly about how she feels as a student at the high school.
Madam Chair, that's, that's, we can do that, so it's.
Could I make a couple more comments?
I can't tell who's breaking up, if it's Ian.
It's Martha?
Yes, of course.
Okay. I realize, in terms of the, the work that's being done on the Equity Committee, I wanted to comment also around curriculum, which Mr. Foss was asking about. And it's, I think, it's my understanding, and, and the action plan hasn't been finalized, but that we will be looking at all of our curriculum through what's, the latest terminology is the Equity lens, because it is pervasive in so many different ways, whether it's what's up in somebody's classroom, and do kids see themselves represented, it's what's going on in the books that they're looking at. It's all of those areas that we want, I hope we will be looking at all of our curriculum grades, all the grades, through this lens to try to make sure that we are supporting all of our students in that way. And another area is, and this is somewhat implied in what we all said, but I want to make sure that, you know, as we said, it's hard to talk about race, and many teachers aren't sure. I don't know if that was Mr. Larkin or Sarah who said that, but we need to support our teachers. We need to give them the tools so they do know how to intervene, how to speak, and how to support students if it's an uncomfortable situation. If it's a hurtful or painful situation for our students, we want to make sure that the teachers have what they need in terms of training, and as well, the, the students. I see that as a part of, I heard that as part of the discussion in the committee, so that was really helpful. Wanted to add that.
Okay. Sarah, you, you made a remarkable presentation, and we are really thrilled to have you on the committee with us. We are 100% on board with the Equity Committee and your efforts, and we hope that you will update us at every school committee meeting. I do have one question. Is this, is the Equity Committee simply put for racial discrimination, or does it include discrimination of all kinds, like, for instance, special needs?
It's, it's equity, covers all bases on equity.
Good.
Especially LGBTQ, it's not just racial issues, it's all equity, equity issues.
Okay, that's perfect. That's exactly what I was hoping for in answer, because I think we need that. Sarah, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say thank you to a few teachers that have been part of the committee, Mrs. Crossman, Mrs. Genoveth, and Mrs. Chang. They're the ones who are leading this committee and helping all high school students raise our voices. And I know that while we talk about training for educators, there are a lot of them who currently have checked up on us and asked if, like, they can share whatever we want. So, I'm thankful for all of them. So, I just wanted to say that out there.
Okay, well, you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment? Okay, one more thing on this. When we get a little further into the agenda, we're going to do the subcommittee assignments, and I'm hoping that we will get the committee to agree to appoint two people to this Equity Committee, so that we will have school committee members that are an actual part of the committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's a, someone like to make a comment?
Yes, I just saw that pop up. Is there any audience members that would like to make comments? Shafan Wong.
Hey, Shafan Wong here, parent of a child in Francis Wyman, also Town Meeting Member of Precinct Four, and also an executive committee member for the National Association of Colored People, the NAACP. Our closest branch was, which is the Mystic Valley Area Branch. And so, I'm very pleased to see that this district-wide Equity Committee will be a standing agenda item here with the school committee, so thank you for that. I understand that we have a way to go in terms of selecting the right partner through a competitive bid that would be able to support an action plan. And so, I understand that I'm fully supportive of applying the Equity lens to all of the curriculum. And I also understand that there's also been discussion regarding hiring practices, retention, promotion, hopefully also making sure that even our sourcing and procurement practices were being inclusive. I have a key question regarding the composition of this Equity Committee. I'd like to understand how many people of color, for example, African-Americans, are included on this committee, and I'd also like to understand the representation from members of the parent community and/or other social justice and race-based organizations, such as the NAACP or analyst organizations.
Can someone answer that?
Sure. Patrick, go ahead.
Sure. So, the Equity Committee is a sub, or a shoot-off of our, formerly was a cultural competence subcommittee. We had this, a district capacity project we worked on for multiple years in the district, which had groups of teachers. It was for teachers that were focused on different areas. So, it was cultural competence at the time. When the district capacity project broke up a couple of years ago, we formed an Equity Committee, and we invited anybody that wanted to come within the district, like any educators that wanted to be a part of it. So, it was a, it was a Burlington Public School staff group. Then, when the high school staff came to us with some high school students, we added the high school students to the voice. So, one of the things on the action plan, Mrs. Wong, is to start to also have some parent representation at the table next year. So, your question is timely, and I would love to have a side conversation with you at some point soon to talk about the, the best way to do that, to, to make sure that we have representation of the voices in our community.
I'd welcome that, Patrick, and appreciate also the formality. I look forward to working with you again. So, don't hesitate to reach out. You have my email.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Shafan. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Okay. Eric, do we need a motion to create a school committee subcommittee for the Equity Committee?
I'd be happy to make it.
Yes, I, I believe we should, Madam Chair. It's gonna be an official subcommittee of the school committee, and that means the representation will be not only speaking for themselves as individuals, but will also be representing the be representing the, the school committee during the conversations.
Okay, Martha, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we establish a diversity and equity subcommittee comprised two members of the school committee to work in conjunction with the district-wide Equity Committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? Ready to vote? All right, then, Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mrs. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll, we'll vote on the members when we get to the, the subcommittee. So, moving on. The school committee's summer meeting schedule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Sharon put out two dates. We typically meet once in July and once in August, so we're following through with that. We may need to meet more frequently depending on, we most likely will need to meet more frequently. I honestly just haven't seen the guidelines yet, so my hope was to see the guidelines, put a plan together, and then set up some opportunities. As you stated, Madam Chair, these are business meetings, so we need to have at least the two business meetings. We may have, we may have other opportunities, we may have other public hearings or a parent forum as separate from those meetings moving forward. So I just think we're going to have to have more conversations as we approach the fall than we, than we typically do, because the fall's going to look a little bit different. So I just didn't know exactly what that would look like yet until I see the state guidelines, which I'm hoping will be this week sometime.
Okay, so Sharon, what are the dates of the two meetings we're setting?
July 21st and August 18th.
Okay, so we'll set those two meetings, and there may be others that are called as needed by the superintendent. I don't believe that requires a vote.
No, Madam Chair, those are just the two business meetings, and then we'll, we're going to have to schedule some other meetings, again, I'm assuming around that, but we need at least those, those two business meetings.
Right, so we're not going to schedule others, we're going to wait until you need them, right?
Yes, and then we'll talk about that and try to figure it out. So, like I said, I just need to see the, the, the state plan first. So that's, hopefully that'll be imminent, we'll share that with the committee, and then we'll, we, we'll, we'll need to have some conversations about that, obviously.
Okay, so those are the dates for the, for the two meetings. Next item is the ELE Coordinator, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we started this conversation last year, it shouldn't be new to the committee, I just think it got sidetracked. One of the fastest-growing student groups in Burlington are, are English-language learners, and the state is formalizing that in terms of how we coordinate and interact their services. The committee's been very generous in terms of adding our ESL teachers to support those students, so I wanted to thank the committee for that. But we're approaching the number of students where the state is asking us to formalize a coordinator position. So with that, I just want to turn it over to Patrick, who oversees the ELL program. And so Patrick, we're, we're right at that threshold, and we're going to quickly surpass that. So, Patrick?
Thank you. Yeah, did Sharon, is there a job posting in the packet for the school committee?
Yes, there is.
Okay, great. So you can see some of the, the things that we're trying to cover. The state does ask that you have a director when you hit 200, and I think the last check I had was 185 ELL students in Burlington. So for the, the folks that are new to the committee, the two new members, over the last half dozen years, we've, we've grown dramatically. I think we had, at one point, we had a ELL teacher that went between the middle and high school, we had people that would go between a couple of the elementary schools, and due to the growth of our English learner population, we have 11 ELL staff now full-time, which is, which is tremendous. So thank you to the committee for supporting that, and allows us to meet the needs of those students. But with the growing number of students and the growing number of staff, it would be great to have somebody with an ELL certification to spend more time with the coordination, and you can see the, the number of details there. So not asking for a full-time director at this point, which the state kind of recommends when you hit 200, just looking to add a coordinator for, for, with a stipend, and we can work, I think that would have to be discussed with the BEA, what that stipend would be and so forth, but for, as a, to bridge the gap at this point, because I understand the situation we're in, budget-wise, certainly not looking to add an administrator this year.
So Madam Chair, I was just looking for a motion to approve, Patrick, are we going to call it an ELL coordinator?
Correct.
So an ELL coordinator stipend, again, it's, it's an intermediate step before we feel we cross the threshold where we're going to need to add a, add a director. The state is becoming much more formal in terms of its accountability and service programs that ELL students are required to have, and I told the committee, the mindset here is it's sort of evolving similarly to special education, where we, we all have, all of districts have a special education director, that's sort of where the ELL is going to migrate to. So again, for this, for tonight, we're just looking for approval of an ELL coordinator's stipend, and we have to go back and bargain some of the amounts based on some of the other stipends we have with the, with the union.
Is there a motion?
Aye, so moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, questions by the committee members?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Clarified, thank you, Madam Chair. Is that you, is a plan to give a stipend to an existing EL teacher and have them perform these duties?
Yes, I think we have multiple members of our ELL team that would be capable of performing those duties.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll put that to a vote. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay, is there anything else on that topic?
Chris, could I just jump in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Not on that topic, but I just noticed that Sarah was still here, which is great, I'm glad she's interested, but I just wanted to make sure she understands that typically the, the student doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting, oftentimes it's during the school year and they have better things to be doing, but obviously she's more than welcome to stay with us this evening, but I just wanted to let her know that it's, it's not against the rules for you to duck out if, if you need to.
I was actually typing a goodbye message in the chat, just to thank you.
We're going to enjoy working with you.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to working with you all, so thank you so much, everyone.
Okay.
Sarah, thank you.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, the next item, preliminary 2020, 2021 school year guiding principles, Dr. Conti.
Madam Chair, this is, we're not going to solve the problem in this evening's meeting, but when we've had challenging decisions to make, when the committees had challenging decisions to make, and I think two examples that come to mind right away are when we built the memorial school and we had to redistrict the four elementary schools, redistricting can always, can oftentimes be very contentious, and also when we discussed changing the high school start time, I think what helped ground those conversations was the committee spent time not jumping right into solutions, but discussing some guiding principles. And so I just want to make sure that the committee sets aside some time to have conversations about what those guiding principles are, because I think what happens is, when we jump right into solutions, the conversations become much more reactive, and, and there are going to be some decisions about the remote learning that, again, that may not excuse everybody, and the guiding principles mean that our, our plan for the fall needs to sort of do the best for 3,600 kids, and every parent is going to be advocating for their child or their children, as they absolutely should. And so, but I think the, the responsibility of putting the plan together is that it needs to meet, do the best we can for, for all kids. And in do, in so doing, I hope that we can meet more, more individual, more individual needs moving forward. So, so what is a, what is a guiding principle, or what is an example of a guiding principle? Is they, the school committee sort of set, had a principle on, I think, we had a meeting on March 13th, where you were committed to paying people through the closure, and that was a principle, so the decisions that we made then to continue to pay people was driven by a principal conversation by this committee. This committee typically, as a principal, talks about in transportation, we don't charge fees, but you also have a seat available for every student who, who wants it, even if they don't choose to use the seat on the bus. So again, that's a principle, and then when we put the bus contract out, or when we look at selecting a bus contract, or when we put out the requirements, the requirements reflect that principle. So that's sort of what I'm trying to set up with this conversation, again, not limiting that people could certainly make, make suggestions about whether we have plexiglass partitions or, or cardboard partitions, or whether we have cloth masks or disposal masks. Again, I understand all those decisions are coming, but I think what I'm most interested in with the committee is just for the five of you to talk about some guiding principles, reach some agreement, and I think that's going to help shape the direction that the staff goes in. You may even want to talk about some of the differences between remote learning and online learning. I think clearly there are some parents who want online learning, and if that's not a principle, certainly wasn't part of the state guidelines, but I'm saying that's going to cause some, some folks who are maybe not liking what we're doing. So this, so that, that's my explanation about the guiding principles. I sort of jotted some things down for the committee to look at as a draft. All they were meant to be was a conversation starter, they weren't meant to, you can take them all out if you want, but that's really a part of the guiding principles, and I'd like to revisit these again on July 21st as well, because I think if we start talking about solutions too quickly, we, we will, we're going to get bogged down pretty quickly as well. So that's sort of, Madam Chair, where it is, and I, I shared with you a draft of some of the principles.
Okay. So, do you want us to discuss them right now? Do you want us to think about them between now and the next meeting? How do you want to handle it?
Well, again, I wouldn't mind discussing some because they're going to come up pretty quickly. So obviously, we're not going to be able to provide transportation for every student or every seat. We're going to have to survey parents to see who's even going to need, need transportation or want to use transportation, but clearly we're going to staff, I'm going to be going against the committee's sort of standing principle or standing philosophy about transportation. If we have to see, put one student per seat on a bus, and I think the CDC now is telling us every other row, even if this state changes that, I don't think we're going to be able to sit three students to a seat as we normally do. I'm not sure the committee's going to want us to add 10 more buses, I just don't think that's financially makes sense. So we're going to have to potentially change our philosophy on transportation. So that might mean some students need to walk to school who haven't, who've taken the bus in the past. We just might need to make some of those major changes to make our fall plan work and have it make financial sense. So, so I think there are some sort of larger categories that we can talk about, that we can, that, that maybe we can have some conversations about, but I think, Mrs. Monaco, we're probably going to move some of these conversations, they're going to take place over a few meetings, not just, not just tonight. So transportation would be one of them. I think, Ms. Ellis asked a question earlier in the meeting that had to do with stipends. I think who we pay, how we pay would be a guiding principle that the committee should weigh in on, and we may have to make some reductions coming up, so I think the guiding principle would help shape, would help shape those, those conversations moving forward. There's no state budget yet, and so not only is the state going to give us guidelines, they're going to give us guidelines without also telling us how much state aid we're going to receive. So I think some of the conversation is going to have to be somewhat flexible. So I think that would be an area. And then, I think, you know, when we started talking about some of the, some of the principles, I think we just wanted to establish right off that we're going to be following the safety recommendations by the Mass Department of Public Health for both students and staff, and then I'd like the committee to consider prioritizing the social, emotional, and physical wellness of the students over academics, but again, that might cause some issues or consternation with some families, but I'm trying to think of all 3,500 kids. So would it make sense, Madam Chair, for me to just read down sort of the draft principles that I put together, and then have you all comment on that?
Sure, I, I just wanted to ask everyone if they had them in front of them. All right, Carl does, Catherine does, Tom isn't going to tell me anyway.
Yes.
And Martha does. Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
So again, I think you're all looking at them, I just said the, again, the opening plan, and these aren't in any order of priority, they were just sort of discussed amongst some of the, the leadership team in the district, so the opening plan should reflect the safety recommendations by the Mass Department of Public Health for both students and staff. That was one bullet. We had a social, emotional, and physical wellness of students and staff takes precedence over academics, that was our second bullet. Our third was remote online learning cannot replicate the students' experiences in their school communities with their teachers, administrators, peers, and support staff. We know that remote learning, again, can't do that. The fourth bullet was the more independent the learner, the lower the negative impact of remote learning. So older students, the older students' day may look different than students who are younger and in the, in the elementary school. It may not be an equal plan for everybody. Students who require specialized supports to reenter school may have a different reentry to meet their needs. I think we have to think about the fall differently, again, depending on student needs. That was a bullet that was discussed. That may impact the start date of our school year. The next one I mentioned was the district will prepare to seamlessly move between in-person instruction and remote instruction if the buildings are closed again. I think we have to, in any plan we do, we have to consider that the buildings may close. I think for those of you who have students in college, some colleges are starting their semesters early, and they're releasing the kids around Thanksgiving, they're ending the semester and not getting them back until after February to create the break during flu season. Transportation will not be guaranteed as prior to the pandemic, that was, again, a point that I sort of spoke at a lot before. Collaboration between grade levels and subject areas within and across schools will be prioritized for consistency and coherence. Classrooms and teachers tend to have some autonomy within a, within a, within some structure, but I think obviously some of the feedback that we got is people want to see more consistency and coherence between classrooms and schools, so we might need to be more top-down in the fall than we typically are. Special subject areas, art, music, physical education, library, and computer science will continue to be an important component of learning. There are some districts that have made, I think, really drastic decisions regarding those staff that I just want to make sure that, that we don't do, but certainly it's up to the committee. Every opportunity will be made to have instruction happen outside. I think the state is going to really promote teaching and learning out of the building whenever possible, and then we're committed to providing technology for all students that can be accessed at home and at school, and we'll expand our one-to-one learning program for home use. So you all know that we've typically just sent home iPads with high school students, which is about 1,000 iPads. If we're going to be sending home 3,500 iPads, it's going to require some changes on, on our part, and so I know you've only had a few days to, to look at these, but I just think talking from principles will really help shape the plan we have moving forward, and I think it helps put the why behind some of our decisions. And again, not everyone's going to agree with every decision, but I think if we're, if we are consistent with principles, I think that'll help explain them, as it did for when we had to make difficult redistricting decisions.
as it did for when we had to make difficult redistricting decisions and when we had to make decisions about, um, um, other significant district things that impact a lot of different people. So Madam Chair, that's sort of my, my thinking on how we can discuss, um, sort of some of the plans, the plan is moving forward.
Okay, it sounds like you've given this a lot of thought. Would members of the committee like to comment on, on these, um, guiding principles?
I'll, I'll go first.
I'll comment on them. I, I think, um, I think they're very well thought out. And between now and our next meeting, maybe we could even, Tom? Tom, you there?
I am. Hello?
Do you have a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, my comment didn't sound like you were kind of going down the same road. I actually don't have the, if I left it in my office, I don't have it in front of me this evening, but, um, went over it when we received it, uh, but not in depth and haven't given a great deal of, uh, thought. So I would like to have a more in-depth discussion next time. Obviously if people want to comment tonight, that's fine. But I think some of how we ultimately, at least from my perspective, how I, I develop an opinion on some of these things will, um, somewhat be shaped by some of the, uh, ground rules and guidelines that are going to be coming down hopefully over the next week or two. So I think it's, it's, it's easier to, um, to address them in context than it is just philosophically, in my opinion.
I agree. It sounds like everyone's sort of looking at them and going, yeah, we need to think about this. So how about if we agreed to have a, a more detailed conversation at the next meeting? And between now and then, we all give some thought to these guidelines, uh, these guiding principles along with as we get them, the guidelines from the state. And there's someone who's, who's commenting, Eric, uh, if the kids are all in the same family, can they sit together? I guess that'll have to be worked out too in our, um, in the guidelines that we get.
Again, that, that might make perfect sense, but we're going to have to see what the guideline is from the Department of Public Health and then, um, you know, figure out what they want. And, um, early indications are that, uh, all kids will need to be masked on buses, but they may not, young kids may not need to be masked in school. So I just think we have a lot to, uh, talk about. But that's an example of a very specific question that I think would, the answer would be shaped by, um, a principle. So it might, it might be, um, and please, I don't, I don't know any of the logistics here, but if, um, typically if students were a half mile from school, we would provide transportation to that family. But what we might need to say is, um, the bus might be needed, um, elsewhere and, um, the students may, may need, may need to walk to school. So all I'm saying is we're going to be bumping into lots of, lots of things. I think Burlington is well-equipped to deal with, um, whatever guidelines, um, show up. But I just think it's, it's not going to be sort of business as usual. And, um, I think people get pretty accustomed to, um, uh, to certain things and, and, um, we may need to all make some adjustments. That, that's all I was trying to say with the, with the guiding, with the guiding principles as well.
Yeah, okay. So Carl, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Conti, and this is the second time tonight that I'm kind of putting you in the spot to be the mind reader of Jeff Riley, and so I'm sorry for that. But, uh, and I like this, this list of guidelines. What's your perspective on how they're going to mesh with the state guidelines when they're released?
I think they're going to mesh fairly well. I think Commissioner Riley's dilemma is, um, he has 350 school districts that are, um, resourced incredibly differently. So I, I think he's, he's, he's going to try to put out guidelines that, um, that, um, uh, urban, urban school districts can meet, rural school districts can meet and suburban can meet. And I think there is going to be some flexibility, but I, I do think he's someone who's really committed to equity. And, um, and I think that's going to underline part of the, uh, part of the plan that he's going to, he's going to release. And I do think, just going back to, which is sometimes, you know, be forgotten in all this, this is in response to a health crisis. So I also think, uh, the Department of Public Health is going to be driving, um, a lot of, um, a lot of the plan too. So I, I think, um, that's, we're, we're really going to be deferring to that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Martha. Yes. I, I think it's a, I, I just want to support what you and Mr. Murphy said, that it is a very well-thought-out set of guidelines. And I looked, did look through it and I did not think of anything this week to add to it. You know, some of those issues, some of the guidelines, you know, like we wouldn't, perhaps we might not be able to offer a bus spot for every child, are things that really go against what the committee has done in the past and our desire to make everything available for every child. But I do feel that, um, so far upon first look this week, that, you know, making sure that every student and staff is safe and making sure that social, emotional wellbeing is prioritized. I think those things are the important things and that, um, I suspect we, I would support something, either this or something very similar, uh, at our next discussion. But I also, like you said earlier, um, would appreciate having a further discussion after people have had a chance to look at it.
Okay. So what jumps into my head and it, not necessarily that's, um, the right thing to have jump into my head, but I, I guess sort of a knee-jerk reaction is if we make these changes, it's with anticipation that we will eventually go back to normal. Is that the way you look at it, Eric?
Yes, in a sense. I think we're, we're trying to change the normal to certainly be more equitable. That was the whole point of the prior conversation. So I, I, I think that, um,
Like with busing, for instance, we're not going to, if we, if we change it for the fall, because of COVID, we're not going to keep it that way once everyone's vaccinated against COVID.
I think, I, I'm going to say, Mrs. Monaco, I think that's true, but another variable here is, uh, the, the state budget as, as well. So, um, all I'm saying is our task is going to be to create a local plan that implement, implements the state guidelines. That's going to be our, sort of our plan. And then obviously we have to pay for that plan. So, um, we, we have an approved budget, but we, there's a, a component missing to that and that, and that's the, the state component. So I, I think there's a lot of variables and I think we're going to need to make some, uh, tough decisions. And, um, I'm not sure, uh, we may all be vaccinated before the state budget fully recover. I, again, I, I can't say. So I'm, I'm just saying, believe me, no one wants to go back to sort of, um, a more routine that we're used to than, than me. I just don't think we're going to be, um, at that routine, um, anytime, um, before the fall anyway. So, um, hopefully that, um, will, will continue to, to make this work. I just think we may have to make some decisions that the, the committee has, uh, general philosophy around. Again, I'm using transportation. I don't want to overuse transportation, but I think this committee has been very clear about it. And, um, we may need to change some of that. A real benefit that this committee has had over the years and certainly the 12 years that I've been here is you all have had a firm commitment to small classes at the elementary level. Our class sizes at the elementary level are, again, are great and they're much smaller than many surrounding districts. So if the guidelines come out, um, for reduced class sizes, we may be able to meet the guideline, given our current level of staffing and given our current class sizes. So again, that's one guiding principle that the committee's had that is actually going to align pretty well with, uh, with a state guideline. There are school districts that have 27, 28, um, elementary students in a class, just as a matter of practice. And I think they're going to be in a much different, uh, much different position. So I, I think, Ms. Monaco, that's kind of the, what I'm talking about before, before people jump into, oh, you're going to need four or five more elementary teachers. I, I don't know that yet. Let's see what the guidelines say. And then where it aligns with school committee, um, sort of principles. I think we're going to be in a good place and I think we're going to be in a better place than many. I just think when it comes to other things that the committee has provided, we're going to need to make some, um, harder decisions. And, and I do think we're going to have to, um, uh, look at our employees a little bit differently in fiscal '21 than we did in, in fiscal '20. So I just want to have those conversations, um, openly with the committee and have some principles guide those conversations. So it doesn't look like we're doing sort of an individual-by-individual decision, uh, moving forward.
I, I agree with all that, Eric. I just, um, I just don't want people to think that we're looking at this as a permanent for the rest of ever. You know, I, I want people to expect, as I would expect, that eventually we will return to what we're used to.
Yep.
Okay, there are a couple of comments from, anyone else on the committee have anything they want to say before I answer these comments? Okay, um, to Jen, Jen Scanlon made a comment about a, a subcommittee. It's too early for that, Jen. We don't know what we're doing yet, um, with remote learning because we need the guidelines from the state. But we will consider, um, creating a subcommittee that parents can be involved in when we have more information. And then the next one is, yeah.
Could I just jump in on that? Cause I did, I saw that, that question as well and, um, we've had a number, obviously, of subcommittees over the years for different things, whether it's buildings or tons of different things. The one thing that I have in my experience is common between any subcommittee is things work slowly. You're trying to measure a whole bunch of people's schedules who work for a living. Whatever's, yeah, whatever's the issue was being discussed takes a while to work its way through. You know, oftentimes you get there and it's a productive process, but it is, it is a process. And I think in this particular situation, we have some time constraints that are going to make the usual way of working through things, I think, going to be problematic. I mean, we have school starting at the end of August, give or take. And it's summertime with people, um, you know, someone around or whatever. I think there might be two parts of this process, maybe one on a longer-term, um, discussion and also, but there's got to be a shorter-term way of getting a plan in place that we can create, circulate and get ready to go in, in eight short weeks here. And, um, so I, I'm, I'm somewhat cautious about putting too many committees together. As I think, I, I'm not quite sure there's enough time to properly work through some of these, um, some of these problems. I, I, I would, everybody wants community involvement. The school committee essentially are the community representatives at the school administration level. And I think a lot of these things are going to have to be dealt with, um, through that type of a situation. Uh, I just don't think there's enough time as a practical matter to have a lot of communities, committees and things of that nature to, um, to get to where we have to be in eight weeks.
I agree.
Again, Madam Chair, I think we'll have time for input. I think we're going to be putting a plan out. I just think, um, we're not going to be designing this from scratch. I, I think there's going to be a, a small percentage or a, a smaller, large, whatever, just a, a piece of it that we might have some, um, control over. But, um, I, I just think we're going to need to rethink some things. So, um, I, um, there, there may be some leeway in even the 180-day requirement. So, um, starting at the end of August, again, I think people are making some assumptions. They're looking through the lens that they, that they are familiar with. And I, I just think there's going to be some, uh, some significant, um, some significant changes. So I think there will be opportunities for the, uh, community, community to be involved, but they can't, we're not going to, even if a group of parents wants to overrule the Department of Public Health, we're, we're not going to do that. So all I'm saying is I think we need to identify sort of where input can sort of shape what we're doing and, and where, um, we're sort of locked into, um, certain things that we're going to, um, have to do. If, if high school students are required to wear masks, um, then we, we can't locally say, uh, our high school kids don't have to wear them. So, um, I just think we're going to have to talk about that. When it, when we're talking about scheduling or time in, I think the state's going to determine a lot of that. So parents may like what the state proposes or might not like it. But I'm saying I still think we're going to have to implement, um, some of that, um, moving forward. And then also to the committee is if we are significantly changing some working conditions, we're going to need to spend some time, um, having those conversations. And I think people have been very open and willing to have the conversations about changes in working conditions. But, um, that's also something that the committee has to do, um, on their own. We, we can't, that's not going to be something that we can have a, a broader community conversation about. So, um, again, I'm hearing that parents want to be involved. We will involve them as much as we can. Please let's just get the guidelines first and we can identify the areas where we can, um, ask for some involvement. And I think those are going to be relatively, um, easy to discern. And then again, the next part of this is, and then we need to see the financial resources that we have to, um, to implement this. So that, those are, those are the pieces that are coming up. And, um, I, I'm not feeling like I structured the conversation tonight as well as I should have. I was hoping to have the guidelines prior to this meeting, but I just want the committee to be thinking about principles because I think those will drive some of the decisions that we need to make, um, moving forward in the areas where we can even make those decisions. So I, I think that's it. There's a clear commitment to the state to get younger kids back in school. Every meeting I've been at, they, there's an acknowledgement that the economy can't restart unless schools are open. So I think there, if I'm going to say they're going to prioritize, um, anything, it's going to be for, um, for our younger students getting back to school as quickly as they can.
Okay, Eric. This, to Lister Two Two, we have only scheduled two meetings. There will be others as we need them. We don't know when to have them yet.
Again, Madam Chair, as you, I think, tried to point out, we need two business meetings. Those are meetings that we were going to have, that we have to do for our business. Um, we are going to be scheduling other meetings. We, we sort of understand that. The other meetings may be, um, uh, more of a parent forum as parents are asking for, not a business meeting. And so I, I think we're all saying the same thing. No one is going to shortchange anyone from seeing the guidelines or responding to the guidelines. Um, I'm just trying to set expectations where a lot of the guidelines may be non-negotiable for both from, from all of our perspective, um, and from the parent's perspective. That's all I'm trying to say.
And Eric, we'll share them as soon as you get them, right?
Believe me, I'm, I'm, you all want them, I want them, yes. I'm sure they're going to be released publicly, but we will share them, uh, as we see fit. And then, um, making them real, uh, is, is going to be some of the decision-making that we have to do moving forward.
All right, so let's move on now to communication. School building facilities update and BHS maintenance system failures.
So, Madam Chair, obviously I'm going to hand it over to Bob. Bob?
All right, thank you and thank you to the chair. I think I need to take the first couple of minutes just to, um, you know, make the committee aware of a retirement in our department, uh, with over 35 years of experience at Burlington Public Schools. And who will be missed, Pat Enos is retiring. This week will be her last week.
She can't retire.
I have been telling her that for a long time and, um, she still thinks that she is, but I keep telling her she's not allowed to. So, um, yeah, no, it's going to be tough for our department, um, but Pat was great. I think she's going to be missed by everyone. So if you have some time, please, uh, you know, reach out to her and wish her well, uh, like we've all done here. This Thursday will be her last day. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to Pat for all of her years of service. My next thank you, of course, is going to have to be a couple of groups. It's going to be the custodians, the clerical and, um, the maintenance department. This is that fun time of year where they're super flexible with us and we appreciate their flexibility, um, with the long hours that come into the summertime and the amount of work that needs to get done. I think what COVID and the pandemic has done to us is it's thrown a little bit of curveball and we don't really know what our buildings are going to look like as far as students and teacher return. But that doesn't mean that we don't do a good job maintaining them and keeping them clean. So like I said, I want to thank them for the anticipated work that they're getting into. I think what you all are really interested in, of course, is, is the ongoing conversation that I'm having in regards to the high school. in regards to the high school wood floor in the gymnasium. And again, right now, we're really just working out details contractually with who can do the job scheduling-wise. We're having initial conversations with our architect and engineer just to kind of get that ball rolling. And then obviously, we're looking at a procurement of trying to get this done. So it's not necessarily an update as far as the process, but just to kind of let you know where we are with that process. And another part of the conversation that Martha had brought up last time... Martha, I want to thank you for that. I did send an email earlier today, and it was last minute, so I apologize. But I think the question that came up in the last meeting was a request for any repairs that were done to our HVAC system here at the high school. Looking back for the past three years where most of our work is digital, I was able to come up with a list of close to $100,000 worth of repairs. Again, that sounds like a lot of money, which no question that it is. But please remember that we have over 12 penthouse units and 370,000 square foot, and we may be looking upwards of $12 to $15 million to replace that system. So again, $100,000, like I said, being a large number, I think really is up for this, you know, committee to discuss as far as their threshold for, you know, annual repairs when broken down again over the course of the last three and a half years of close to $100,000. So a lot to digest. Again, I want to thank Pat again for years of service. But if we could just, you know, I'll take any questions that need be.
Go ahead, Martha.
So, Bob, that list was for the last three and a half years. So if I remember correctly, I came on to the school committee five years ago. And I believe between then and three and a half years ago, we also did something... I don't know what all these mean, but something called re tubing the boilers. So if I did the whole inside, and that was in addition to all the things, the $100,000 of expenses you just mentioned. Is that correct?
True. Yes, it is.
So again, we have done this re tubing. There's just not anything left for us to do to keep this thing going. And so that's why I keep pushing. And I think that all the other maintenance things... And I only had a couple of minutes to look at it, but when the first two things listed were compressors and AC repair, was that the time when the air conditioning units died at the high school when Governor Baker was coming?
Yes, yes. Two of those larger purchases are during that time. And then two of them, of course, are for a different year. And of course, I think if you look at them, what you'll mostly see is around the hotter months is where you'll see heating repairs come on. And then during the... I'm sorry, the AC repairs come on. Then once we get to September, October, and turn on the heating units is where we'll start to see the repairs, you know, come about for the heating units. So, you know, it's definitely cyclical. We understand that, that we run the heating units for three to six months, and then we shut those off, and then we run the air conditioning units for same two to four months. And again, we do some of the maintenance in the off-season. Again, these are large numbers, but we are talking about a large system, and we're talking about a large building. So this isn't just for the whole entire district. This is just for one building.
Right, so thank you for putting this list together because I think as we move forward and start working with the architects and looking at what's needed for this high school renovation, to me, there's also we're going to not be spending money like on these issues, at least for the first few years of a new system. So I think it's important that we look at, if we do nothing, we're going to still have hundreds of thousands of dollars of expenses. And, you know, that list doesn't include the $100,000 deductible that we're paying on the damaged gym floors because of one of the repairs there, so up on the roof. So, you know, I just can't emphasize enough how much we need some renovations at the high school. But thank you for putting all that together.
I'd like to make one more comment, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
If you look at this, I tried to use $1,000 as a threshold. I did throw in a $9.69 repair as well, too. Once we get under that $1,000 threshold, I don't have the figure in front of me, but I did notice that, you know, thermostats, we buy in a five-pack for $400. Small repairs maybe for, you know, a small valve pair there, a couple hundred dollars. So I mean, there is some additional repairs in there as well, too. But again, some of those smaller repairs are just general parts that we need and so forth. So it was a little bit tougher for me to get an exact number. But again, please just realize that this is a vision into what some of the larger repairs look like, but not the complete list.
Okay, Eric, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I don't want to delay the agenda any more, but I think we also need to look at this a little bit holistically as well because we have invested a lot in the building envelope itself, Ms. Simon. So we put a new roof on, we put new windows on. So we've tried to make the building more efficient. So by doing, we might have even extended the life of this older system. And then I think the operational costs, I just know that we doubled the size of Memorial when we built the new Memorial. And I think we're spending, again, I don't know the exact figures off the top of my head, but I know we're spending for a building twice the size, we're spending, Bob, maybe you know, as much or less on heating and cooling of that building than we used to, the older building, just because the new units are so much more efficient, the air quality is better. So it's not just about the HVAC unit. I think it's about the operational cost moving forward. I think it's about the air quality in the classrooms. I think it's about trying to look at that high school, if we want to live with it for another 40 or 50 years, looking at the building as a whole and really trying to make smart decisions about the sort of the whole building and not just doing isolated systems at a time. Because again, everything's expensive at 370,000 square feet. It just is. So the numbers are boggling, mind-boggling. But so when I think about sort of what we've done to the building envelope itself, it's been far more than $100,000. It's probably, I don't know, off the top of my head, $5 or $6 million. So I think we have tried to keep the building envelope itself as up to date as possible. So anyway, like I said, I don't want to beliger the... I don't want to delay the agenda, but I think we need a new HVAC system. But I also think we need to look at that in relation to the entire building, too.
I agree.
Chris, are you back? I'll give Madam Chair one more minute, Tom, before having you tag in for the remote learning policy.
I'm here.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm having a little internet problem.
I just want to point out that Mr. Murphy was acting like Al Haig.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Oh, no. What's he really do that? The Wi-Fi.
I feel a mutiny coming on.
I think we need Al Haig.
All right, Tom, why don't you... It's just the MASC remote learning policy. It's a first reading. So it's a mutiny, so it's relatively straightforward.
It won't go away. All right, I'm going to take over momentarily until she finds a hotspot. For Carl and Catherine's sake, usually on these types of things, we do a first reading, then a second reading, and that gives us some opportunity in the interim to get feedback from anybody who might want to give some feedback to it. And then we can have a full discussion before voting it typically at the following meeting. So what we have before us is the first reading of a proposed remote learning policy, which I assume comes from the state, Eric. Is this a package one from either, I don't know, from the commissioner or from the MASC?
It's the Mass Association of School Committees. I think Sharon got the verbiage, and I think some school committees are adopting this language just as suggested by your state organization.
Okay, so basically, it's a first reading tonight. And we don't take action typically on it tonight, but we will at the next meeting. If anybody has any questions or comments on it tonight, certainly, we can entertain those. I'm seeing anybody jumping up and down. It looks like Chris is maybe back, so I'm going to pass the baton back to her.
All right, I'm trying to sign in on my iPad. Can you all hear me?
Yes, I can.
I don't know how long it'll last, but are we up to subcommittee assignments?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I have done what I think is the right subcommittee assignments after speaking individually with people on what their interests are. So how about if I read them, and if there's any issues, then I'll change them. Would that be all right? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Recreation Commission is Tom Murphy. Two members to serve on the Academic Review Board, unchanged, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Simon. Two members to serve on the Sick Leave Bank Committee for the BEA, and that's Eric and me. One member to serve on the Sick Leave Bank for the Administrators Association, that's Martha. Legislative contact person to the Mass Association of School Committees. There is an opening. Martha's on it. She's willing to give it up. We need either one or two people to be willing to chat with our legislative contact people.
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. So we've got both Carl and Catherine. Okay, now, a couple of changes. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting paranoid. Okay, the next one is Sick Leave... Did I do that? No. All right, the 766, which is now CPAC. Mrs. Simon is willing to give that up. Is that correct, Martha?
Yes, if there's somebody who would like to be on that.
All right, so Catherine will join that one with me. The Board of Selectmen's Subcommittee stays the same. The Ways and Means Subcommittee will be Tom and me. The Subcommittee to the Board of Health will be Martha and Carl. Is that okay with both of you?
Yes.
Sounds good.
The Subcommittee to the Recreation, since I moved to Ways and Means, I will give that one up, and it will be Tom and Catherine as a backup. Subcommittee Planning Board will be Tom and Carl. Any objections so far? No. Wellness Committee stays the same. It's Martha and me. The Subcommittee for Transportation never did much, but it might be needed this year. I was on it with Kristen, so I need someone to join with me that would be talking about busing issues.
I'll do it.
Okay. The next one is the Audit Subcommittee, and that's Tom. Now, I sort of threw these up in the air and see which steps they ended on. For Fox Hill, I have Catherine with me as the alternate. For Memorial, I have Carl with Martha as the alternate. Pine Glen has changed. It's Tom and me. Marshall Simons, I have Martha and Catherine. Burlington High School, I have Carl and me. And the last, well, Family Services is Martha. Master Plan is Martha. Disability Access is Martha.
Francis Wyman?
Along with me. We no longer have a need... What?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Francis Wyman is unchanged. It's Tom and me.
Okay, all right.
We no longer need the B-line advisory because it's going away. And Disability Access is Martha and me. And the Equity Committee, I'd like to be Martha and Carl.
Do we need a motion for that, or is that just... We're just doing appointments now because we already have the committee?
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, but if somebody wants to, you know...
That's fine.
Let's see, Sharon. Sharon, do we need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion to appoint two members to that Subcommittee.
Do we need a motion to everything or just that one? We could do it all in one?
You have to do every one of them that you changed.
Can we do it all in one package?
Well, I've been taking the notes, so I have down who's what, all the changes.
Okay, so how about a motion to approve all the changes together, including the new additions to the Equity Committee?
Seconded.
And seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If no one has any objections to what they have here, we'll take a vote. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Floss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mrs. Monaco votes aye. Okay, if I go dead again, Tom can manage the rest of this. But now, let's try moving on. Remote learning policy, first reading.
Chris, Madam Chair, we covered that already. Tom introduced it. And I don't believe... Again, there's no vote needed, but I think Tom introduced the policy. We will post it. People wanted to see the policy. We'll make sure it gets posted and sent out. And then at the next business meeting, which is on July 21st, you guys can have your discussion and take a vote.
That's great. Next item is FY '20 Transfer Funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nicole's going to join us for this item. I think the cafeteria revolving, we wanted to try to address that. So Nicole, I'll turn it over to you for specifics.
Thanks. So I think typically, we address this in our August meeting as we're usually waiting for our reimbursements from the state to come in. We're not receiving any reimbursements because we haven't served lunch in a few months. I thought we could take care of this now before the fiscal year ends. So I need a vote from the committee to fund the CAF deficit in the amount of $287,768 from the FY '20 school operating budget.
Is there a motion?
Seconded.
And what's the amount again, Nicole?
Correct.
Okay, we moved and seconded, and that is to cover the deficit in the cafeteria account?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, is that coming from the excess money in the fiscal year budget?
Yes.
Mr. Eiler?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, Nicole, just a quick question. That's about $50,000 more than had been earmarked in the, I guess it was the June... report. So I'm just curious, is there some surprise that occurred there?
No, so it wasn't a surprise. It was basically the funds that typically were held for seniors in their accounts, and they got reimbursed because they're not going to be spending them.
Okay, so it was just, the estimate was off, but it makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks, Nicole.
Any other questions from the committee on Ways and Means? I would like to address Eileen.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I think so. So historically, where has the deficit been funded from?
The operating budget.
Oh, I thought it was one of the revolving accounts, no?
Nicole, Eric, would you address that?
Yeah. If the revolving account runs into deficit, the agreement with the town is that we will sort of bring it back to zero at the end of every fiscal year. I think what Nicole said is some of our federal reimbursements don't come in until later in the summer, around August. So typically, we are addressing the closure in sort of in the next fiscal year. We're doing it earlier now because we're not going to get any other reimbursements, and we can fulfill our agreement with the town and zero out the deficit in the revolving account using some year-end dollars from fiscal '20. Nicole, did I attempt to explain that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. And either funding source is allowable. I've spoke with our auditors about this.
Okay, so I understand what you just said. But historically, what revolving account has it been funded from? I'm pretty sure it came out of some, I forget which account it was.
I believe it was either Choice or International.
Wasn't it, Nicole? Wasn't it funded from another revolving account?
Yes, in the past, we were funded from both School Choice and International.
I'm sorry, you cut out. You said International, what else?
School Choice.
Okay, so it did come out of the revolving. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sinessi, if you have a question or a comment relative to this agenda item, you may speak now.
I do have a comment. I would prefer that you deferred the position of the liaison to Fox Hill to another parent. You and I have a history that we go back on, and it became incredibly ugly when your family members decided to.
Mr. Sinessi, your comments are out of order. We're talking about the cafeteria deficit.
Can we come back when we talk about Fox Hill?
No, we can't for the simple reason that I have no more conflict than you do at Fox Hill or any other member.
I have no executive authority.
Adam?
I'm listening, yes.
Out of order.
May I make a comment?
We will now go to a vote.
I would prefer, I would prefer that you deferred from that position. That you walked away. There were five members of your committee. I am comfortable with Catherine Bond. I am comfortable with any member of your committee, but I'm not comfortable with your involvement. That's cool, why you?
Order.
Well, why did you call him? You knew what the question was.
I asked you if you had questions on the cafeteria deficit.
And I do not trust my daughter being involved with that school with you involved in it. I don't trust you, Chris.
Mr. Sinessi, kindly shut off your microphone.
Chris, we're not, no. Let's go. I want to hear what Martha has to say.
Mr. Kuna, please close Mr. Sinessi's microphone.
May I make a clarification, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course, Martha.
I just want to point out that the only change in the, these are PTO representative liaisons with the elementary schools that we just voted on. And that Mrs. Monaco has been the alternate on that PTO liaison. And Mrs. Bond will be the new representative. And that's the role, that's our liaison with the school committee. So that's the role that we were voting on.
Mrs. Monaco's entire family is in that school. Mrs. Monaco should choose another school to be liaison to.
It's all. Okay, but I'm sorry. I was interrupted by somebody who wasn't willing to finish. Let me finish. I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. Mr. Sinessi, please close your microphone. We will now take a vote on the transfer of $287,768.
Food for your children.
Mr. Kuna, would you please take care of this? And now we will vote. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mrs. Monaco votes aye. So we have transferred funds to cover the cafeteria.
Madam Chair, have you heard?
The agenda is the CHNA Grant Fund. Dr. Conti?
Madam Chair, have you heard?
Yes, of course, Tom.
I believe the chat portion of these virtual meetings is, we have an option as to whether to include that or not, if I understand the governor's directive correctly. And I would suggest that if we don't, if we have members of the public who can't control themselves and behave themselves, that we, as a committee, consider removing the chat option because I, for one, don't want to listen to this.
Thanks. So I had asked Amy how to handle this very situation. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
And she told me to ask Mr. Kuna to, A, turn off the microphone if this happened, and B, to expel from the meeting if someone was out of order. So that's Mr. Kuna's role unless we decide to turn off the chat, which we very well may if this continues. Okay, moving on. The CHNA 15 Grant Fund approval. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually very good news. We had our representatives from our high school's mental health team propose, send in a proposal to the community health organization, and they were awarded $7,500. I think we sent you a summary of those of of their proposal and what they rewarded the money for. And Nicole put this on the agenda item because the school committee needs to vote to accept the grant. So it's with gratitude. Again, I want to thank the high school mental health team for putting in the time to submit such a great proposal. And then looking forward to using these funds to help students moving forward. So again, the vote isn't to do anything else other than to accept the money. Is that correct, Nicole?
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept the grant as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion on the grant?
I would like to just comment on the grant. Since we didn't mention it for people who are listening, it involves two parts. One is to have a several-month book club for older teens and adults to talk about mental health issues with teenagers that would be facilitated by the mental health counselors from the school district. And I believe they will be working in conjunction with the Burlington Youth and Family Services staff. And the other part of the grant is to provide training and support on social, emotional issues, mental health issues, I should say, for all of our.
Madam Chair, if I'm cutting out, it's to provide mental health support for all of our student athletes.
Okay, did you get your question answered?
I think it was more of a comment.
All right, I'm trying to, I'm trying to switch to my iPad. Okay, who has a comment?
I had a question now that Dr. Conti mentioned athletes. Isn't there, it looked to me like there was two programs, one for athletes and one for non-athletes or anyone else really? Is that correct?
Yes, there were, there are two, two programs that were funded. As Ms. Simon said, one was for a book club with some counseling components to it with, so students can discuss and work through some mental health issues. And the second grant that they got was specifically for mental health issues associated with being a student athlete. So, Mr. Foss, you are correct, is there are two distinct programs trying to meet the broadest need of kids that they felt they needed. Again, it is, is they wrote the grant, they extended themselves, and they're just a very committed, talented group of people, and want to congratulate them on winning the grant. And then, again, hope the school committee supports accepting the money.
Okay. Did you get your question answered? Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, how about a motion to approve the grant?
So how do you move and seconded?
All right. Got a little flustered. It's been moved and seconded to approve the CHNA 15 Grant Fund. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. That's unanimous. Anticipated year-end purchasing. Eric, Nicole?
I just want to, Nicole can get into some specifics, but there's only certain things that we can purchase ahead of time. So we can't, for instance, prepay teacher's salary. So moving moving forward in terms of for next year. But there are things that we can. And so I just wanted to sort of inform the committee some of the things that we were thinking about in relation to what we think is going to be a different fall opening. So there's some really obvious things. And then Nicole can put some dollar figures specifically to it. So we're obviously going to need to purchase some personal protective equipment, PPE, which is now a new acronym that we all have learned. So we're believing that the state is going to adopt the CDC guidelines, but we're trying to prepare for about having 12 weeks worth of, worth of PPE, so being prepared for the first three months. Not only are we doing that, but 350 other school districts in Massachusetts are doing that, along with 50 other states that are doing that. So you can imagine, we're working with multiple vendors. Barbara Connolly, our nurse leader, has been fantastic in terms of identifying the PPE needs and then moving forward. Where the guidelines are going to help us is I think there's going to be a parent and family component to the PPE. So I think while the district is going to need to provide math, for instance, for students who may potentially forget it, it may also be a piece of equipment or a part of, almost like a school uniform, that the parent, the families are going to need to provide. And again, we would try to support that moving forward. So there's going to be a whole lot of moving parts, but we are attempting to use fiscal $20 to purchase some PPE for use for next year. And then the other major category is technology. And again, we, our plan is to send home not just the high school iPads, but iPads with with all students. So going from 1,000 to 3,500 iPads. We need to fill out some grades where we typically don't provide a device for every student, and that's going to be our kindergarten students, our preschool students. If they're going to be fully remote, they're going to need a, need for us to provide them a device. And then there's other things that go with that, that, again, that I wasn't even sort of thinking about, but we would need to provide charging cords and plugs because typically those devices are with the students in school. They are all charged within carts. That's where we keep them for charging and for protection at the end of the day. So if we're sending them home, we're going to have to do things like that. So Bob is much more versed on the technology aspect of that, so he can address any specific questions you may have. And Nicole can talk about the sort of dollar amounts, and I'll let Nicole go first in terms of what we're thinking about for purchase of some supplies and equipment that is going to help us be COVID-ready for the fall. And I do also want to point out, I'm sure Ways and Means is going to ask the question, and again, I don't mean to preempt it, but we are keeping track of any supplies, materials that we're needing specifically to address some of our COVID needs. So we should be able to look back and say, you know, adjusting to COVID cost us this much money. Again, we may spend less than other areas, but I want to identify for the committee and for Ways and Means, some of the costs associated with making these adjustments. So Nicole, do you have some dollar figures that you can provide?
Yes, so in the technology department, there's about 165,000 in expenses, which is, I think, 300 iPads and the cables and chargers that Dr. Conti had mentioned. We also have the PPE for about, for 12 weeks. It's estimated to be about $360,000 for just 12 weeks of what we need for PPE in the schools. In addition to that, we had some additional elementary expenses. There's some concern over sharing supplies and whatnot. So there's another about $30,000 to put some kits together to avoid sharing supplies in the fall. And then again, in curriculum, about $85,000 for additional books if we need to have two sets, one at home and one at school. So those were sort of the major categories there.
So again, just, Ms. Bond, you had asked at the last meeting, you had some concerns about screen time, for instance. So we're looking at purchasing for our consumables, which is the part of our curriculum that the students usually write directly in, looking at having two sets of those so the kids would have the consumables at home and a consumable at school. Because we have to prepare, not just for remote learning, but we have to prepare, if even if we start in school, we might need to shift to remote learning in October or December or whenever. So we want to make sure we're ready to go back and forth. So again, that's, that's sort of where the, where those extra consumable materials are coming from.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Martha.
So there are also additional COVID expenses for disinfecting and cleaning supplies that are in addition. If we're going to be cleaning more often, you know, maybe different kinds of disinfectants. Is that another expense that we've been able to address now?
It's a good question, Martha.
I'll tackle it if I can to the chair.
Go for it.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, Martha, that is a very good question. So we do have some supplies, obviously, that we have using for now, but the additional request is actually included in the numbers that Nicole had given through the PPE purchases, especially through Barbara Connolly. So in addition to the supplies and so forth that we'll need for cleaning, that would also include, let's say, gloves and masks and whatnot. So it is included in that initial 12-week supply and then a little bit beyond that as well, including hand sanitizer, cleaners and wipes. And again, the availability on a lot of those is all over the place. So again, we're looking at multiple vendors to, to purchase these. But again, that 12-week supply and our summer supply is included in those, those numbers.
Yeah, we're, we're all learning a lot about this stuff. So the alcohol content that's required, I think the, the Department of Public Health is starting to, you know, every hand sanitizer isn't the same. And believe me, I think we all get about 150 emails a day about people willing to sell us hand sanitizer. So we're, we're trying to make sure that the, the product we get is, you know, is sort of certified and approved. I, I do think regular hand washing is going to be a part of the school routine, part of the day. Not that it's not, but I'm saying even more frequently. And some of our schools aren't equipped with classroom sinks. So I think having hand sanitizer available is going to be something that's, that is going to be important that we're trying to, we're trying to track down. So the schedule might even include a, a break every hour or two specifically for hand washing or, or hand disinfecting.
Okay, is there anyone else? So there's no action on this item?
Again, no, I think Madam Chair, we, we can do this all within the categories of the, of the budget that they're supposed to be in. So we're just informing the committee that we're buying more supplies and materials for, from the supplies and materials account. If we were, if we were sort of moving money between accounts, we would ask you to, to vote to move, but I think we can make these purchases within the categories that exist. We're just informing the committee that we're, we're trying to prepare for the fall using some fiscal 20 money, and the committee asked us to identify sort of the amount. So we gave you, again, the, the rough amount and then the categories of supplies, materials that we are purchasing. Again, we, we can't prepay for a salary. So it's not like we could take a, a position from next year and pay for it out of year end, but we can, we can, we can buy more cleaning products because we'll still use some of the cleaning products this year and it'll just run into, run into next year.
Okay, but you, you don't need to transfer money from non-salary to salary or vice versa?
My understanding is no. So I'm just going to get, I'm going to ask Nicole to confirm what I'm saying. So I just, Nicole, that is correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So.
Okay, great. So. Go ahead.
No, the one transfer we needed was already on the agenda, and that was for the cafeteria account.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions, comments, committee members? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the superintendent's summative evaluation, which I am prepared to do. Hopefully I won't lose my connection. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right. So the end of cycle summative evaluation report for Dr. Conti. Step one, assess progress towards goals. The, the things that you check off, did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. Before, before I read this, I should say that this is based on the committee prior to the election. This is a, a performance assessment that goes throughout the year. It starts early in the year. And it is not, the, the two new members are not participants in this evaluation. So the, assess the progress towards the goals. Every member said either met or exceeded the goals. Step two, assess performance on standards. Again, every member said either proficient or exemplary. Step three, the overall summative performance was exemplary. That was the majority of the committee. The superintendent's performance goals were all either met or exceeded. The superintendent's performance rating for standard one was all proficient or exemplary. The superintendent's performance rating for standard two, management and operations, was all proficient and exemplary. The superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community, was proficient and exemplary. The superintendent's performance rating for standard four, professional culture, was proficient and exemplary, with an overall rating of exemplary. Now I have a narrative that I will read based on input from the five members. Most of these words are not mine. I compiled the thoughts of other people. A few of the words are mine, but I want to point out that this is, five people rolled into one. Dr. Conti is an outstanding superintendent. He is knowledgeable, committed, enthusiastic and innovative. The year 2020 has clearly demonstrated this. In addition to all of the usual challenges, Dr. Conti has done an outstanding job leading through this unprecedented school closing due to a worldwide pandemic. He has worked tirelessly to keep our students engaged in learning while at the same time working with DESI, the Commissioner of Education and Superintendents around the state, to navigate through the health and education challenges. Over the past two years, the superintendent has worked with staff to update all of the district's financial controls. According to audits and updates, all is working well, and what may have been a weakness in years past has become a strength for the district. He is also to be commended for his work with staff in general and personnel issues in particular. Dr. Conti's professional standards are excellent and far beyond reproach. While some of the academic and social emotional initiatives have been paused by the school closings, the focus on making sure students are safe, fed, connected and educated remotely has been the correct one, which clearly shows Dr. Conti's values and priorities support the mission and values of Burlington Public Schools. We recognize Dr. Conti's efforts to plan for reopening safely as soon as possible in conjunction with the standards we must adhere to, which will evolve over the next weeks and months. We understand that DESI's superintendent standards indicate that a rating of exemplary is reserved for performance of such high level that it could serve as a regional or state model for a superintendent. Applying that test, a majority of the committee rates Dr. Conti as exemplary because of his performance for our district and the many examples of him being recognized on a state and national level as being a leader among the state's superintendents and of him being chosen to implement and model new practices and procedures. He has earned the distinction of being one of the best superintendents in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we are lucky to have him in Burlington. Would the committee like to comment on anything I just read or said?
I would like to comment. I know that Dr. Conti is uncomfortable during these evaluations, but I want to thank him for all that he does for our students here in Burlington.
Thanks, Martha. Anyone else?
No further comment. My summary spoke for itself. I did, I did notice I can't see the wall behind Eric, Eric's head. Oh, there it is. I see it.
I can't even see Eric. Is he in there somewhere?
I think he's hiding.
Anyone else have a comment? Either Catherine or Carl?
I mean, I, I, I'm going to say I'm new, new to, obviously, the committee, but clearly, you know, I, I've had a child who's gone through the whole school system and I, I've felt that, you know, Dr. Conti has done a great job over the years and, you know, his peers have felt the same. So, you know, again, I, I want to thank you for everything you've done. And I, and I know that you're always looking forward, so.
Kyle, did you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. Martha, or Eric, do you have something you'd like to say before we address some concerns you have?
I just want to thank the committee. It's an honor to work in Burlington. And as I say every year, any sort of acknowledgement of the superintendency is really the recognition of the work of others. And I just have a phenomenal team around me that the school committee works with all the time. They're always working behind the scenes. They're always getting stuff done. And, and I feel like, again, the evaluation is, is a reflection of their work as well. I did want to highlight, and Bob stole my thunder a little bit, people like Pat Inos, who've worked in the district for 34 years, and just so dedicated and thorough, end up making the superintendent look better than, than he should. So I think that's, all the folks in the, in the central office, and again, the team of Patrick, Mary Hood, our special ed director, Nicole, Bob, Terry, my assistant. Really, I think this, this evaluation is a reflection of, of their work and, and their professionalism. And I've never been prouder of our staff as I have in the last three months. And I, again, I understand it's a challenging situation for, for some families and, and, but I saw people sort of relearn their professions, relearn some skills, deal with their own families, help many families in Burlington who are in, in need. And, and I just, I've just have never been prouder of our teachers, our principals and our educators. So, so thank you to the committee. And like I said, I want to thank everyone else, my staff, and Burlington is a great place to do this job.
Okay, Martha, do you have a motion? Martha, where are you?
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn? It's not.
No, a motion on, when I spoke to Dr. Conti, he simply asked for two items. One was a one-year extension on his contract, and the other was the same increase that the teachers got, which is two and a half percent.
Yes, yes, as, as part of the superintendent evaluation, we also review his compensation and contract. And so I would like to make a motion that he receive the same increase as the unions have received this year, the two and a half percent, and a one-year extension on his contract, which means that it's, continues to be a five-year contract.
Actually, it makes it six.
It continues to be a six-year contract. Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Hearing none, I will take the vote. Mrs. Bond.
Aye.
Mr. Foss.
Aye.
Ms. Simon.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. That is unanimous. So you're stuck with us for a while longer, Eric.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the committee, before we, before we sign off after a long but lovely evening?
Madam Chair, again, the, the vehicle for this might be a little bit awkward, but Patrick and I have been talking, we're going to get the guidelines in the next day or two, and we're going to both be taking a bit of a break. So for July 4th, it doesn't mean we're not planning or talking, but we're going to probably disconnect from our computers just for, just for a few days. And then we're going to get back at it, and we're going to be submitting to the committee and, I guess, to the public a communication plan, so people can know when we're going to be communicating and, and be expecting, be expecting information to come out, invitations to meetings. We are going to have to survey, again, parents again and staff again at a point this summer. I think I mentioned, just for things like transportation use, will you be sending your child back to school? We're responsible for educating the kids, whether they stay at home or, or they're in school. So we just need to ask some questions of families. I believe there's going to be some educate, some education of families that's going to be required in terms of getting their children the proper PPE to bring to school, once that's identified. And also, for instance, taking their temperature prior to their leaving the house. So we're all going to have to learn new habits. And again, I think the important part of that is going to be for us to get a communication plan out to the committee. But we're, we're just going to, we're going to take, I think, the next week just to, to recharge a little bit. And then, but if, if the guidelines come out tomorrow, we'll make sure that the committee is linked to the guidelines, but I'm, I'm sure it's going to be a big splash when it comes out. So you won't need us to do that, but, but we'll, we'll do that again, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.